Just spinning?
It's just spinning. And I've done this multiple times and it's always worked. Anyway. We see, uh, let's see here. So we have enough people. Why don't we get going, I guess? It's 7:05, right?
Right.
You might want to go, Carrie, at some point, just check to see if by some stretch it's going. It's supposed to be going to the, to the church Facebook page, but.
Alright.
I don't know. I have a doubt. I have a doubt that it's doing that. But I did, but I did, I did start the recording for this, so perhaps we'll be able to grab it.
Yeah, I would try to do it, but I don't know how you do it, so I can't help you while you're doing it.
Go. Right. Sorry, my wife was just saying, she had to get on, so. Alright, how is everyone? Alright, I heard you all talking. It's great to see that we have this opportunity for some folks to get together. What a beautiful day that we had.
It was very big.
Yeah, um, is, uh, let's see, we're not, Sherry isn't here yet, is she?
No, I don't see her yet.
Man, we're doing, we're doing James for her.
I know, what the heck?
I have to get a lap till I put my Bible on.
This is Susan. So we still have some folks coming in, so we'll just, I mean, we're just gonna, we're gonna get into this softly, so.
Sure.
We always start, we always start with, there's Sherry coming on. We always start with prayer, so would you mind bowing your heads with me? Heavenly God, we come here for many reasons. Not just to learn about what's in the Bible. There's been lots of people that have looked at that over the years and they can tell us what it says. But Lord, what we want is that your word might come into us and so that we might live to it. And that the Holy Spirit will grab a hold of our lives and transform us into beings that we could never be without, without having you in our lives. And we also, when we grasp a hold of that, that we're also moving towards the creation that you desire. So we thank you for this opportunity to be together. Lord, of course, we pray for those who are sick and we actually, we mourn for those who we've lost. And Lord, we pray for strength for the people who have been separated and haven't been able to be together in such a long time. So, but Lord, give us a fellowship here today together. We ask this in your name. Amen.
Amen.
Amen. Hello, Sherry? She's, she's got, uh,
Hello.
How are you?
I'm fabulous. How are you tonight?
Alright, okay. You're just on the phone tonight.
Honest to God, my internet went out, so there is no pictures.
Oh, okay.
Maybe there, see, maybe there is a problem somehow, Tim.
There is. It's out in our area. They said it'll be back on by 10:30, so we have Comcast.
Alright, well, we'll go with what we got in here. And so I want to welcome you all again. This is about the book of James, and so I have, I've produced, uh, share my screen here and, um, share my screen and go to, and go up here. You alright? Everybody see it?
Yes.
Oh, yeah. I thought you just disappeared.
And I can get that to big screen right here. Look at this. This is what I've been doing. Here, we're talking about James in the Old Testament, in the New Testament. So, uh, we have here, uh, I've gotten, I love artwork. I don't know if you guys have figured that out yet. So, I'm not an artist, but I like the way that people can create, so. Um, this is a, this is a Byzantine era, about 300 A.D. representation of James. And if you look in the upper right there, you'll see this is in Greek. So that upper right there is James's name in Greek, and that is, uh, it's actually a Hebrew name that has been made in, Hellenized, what they would call it, made into that, and it's actually Yakobian. Right? So you can see the K, that's the, so Yakobian, and, um, so that's Jacob, really, but it, but we bring it into James. And James was known by several names. Of course, we have James, but there was a number of James in the Bible, so to kind of identify him a little bit more, we're talking about the one that writes the book in the, in the New Testament. He's also known as James the Lesser. Right? James the Younger, James the Just, James the Righteous, and he's also known as the Red Martyr. So, this picture here is, uh, somebody's, uh, again, this is a little bit later, so this is probably about 700 A.D. And this is a picture of Mark and Peter, because they worked very closely together in Jerusalem. Now, which one's which? I don't know. I don't know. But if you notice, they're both wearing red, and, um, so if you ever notice the Cardinals in the, in the Catholic Church and bishops and many other denominations will be, or red. So I thought it was really interesting, because this dates back to 600, 700. And you can see that the clerical colors were actually starting to even, even be noticeable then. So, not so much at the time of, of James, though. And then this is, uh, this is really neat. This is Russian, right? And it's from southern Russia, and this is a picture of, of James. But notice, I've said this before, religious art is, always reflects the appearances of the culture of which that it's, that it's made. So you can see here that this, that this was an area that had, um, very dark-skinned people, and so therefore James was dark-skinned in that. So this is out of a Russian church, and that's, um, probably about the 1600s. So, now, this is what I hope is gonna work. So, um, some of you were able to go, I tried to run the Fileman overview last week. It didn't work out so well, and some of you were able to find it, and, uh, so, but this is the same company. It's called The Bible Project, and they do a really good job, and I would recommend them. So whenever you're thinking about what a book of a Bible might say, and you're not sure about it, just do that search for The Bible Project, and you'll get these, you'll get to where we are. So I am going to, go to stop share for a second. And I'm gonna go to share screen. And then I want to get to, have to use share computer sound. That's what I didn't do last time. And then I need to go over here. And then I need to go. Is it? Is that YouTube? Now I can do it. Coming back.
The letter of James, or at least that's his name in English. If you look in the Greek, you will see that his name is Yakobas, which translates his Hebrew name Yaakov. And that's why most ancient and modern translations render his name as Jacob, and that's what we're gonna call him in this video. Now, there are many Jacobs in the New Testament. Two of them belong to Jesus's inner circle of the 12 disciples, but this letter comes from the Jacob, who was the half-brother of Jesus himself. Now, we learned this Jacob's story from the book of Acts and from Paul's letters. After Peter moved on from Jerusalem to go start new churches, Jesus's half-brother Jacob rose to prominence as a leader in the mother church in Jerusalem. It was made up mostly of Messianic or Christian Jews. This was the first Christian community ever, and we know that it fell on hard times during the 20 years that Jacob was its leader. There was a famine that led to great poverty in the region, and these Messianic Jews were being persecuted by Jewish leaders in Jerusalem. But through it all, Jacob was known as a pillar of the Jerusalem church. He was also known as a peacemaker who led with wisdom and courage until he was tragically murdered. And in this book, we have the legacy of Jacob's teaching and wisdom condensed into a short and very powerful work. The book begins like a letter. He greets all the Messianic Jews who were living outside the land of Israel. But this does not read like one of Paul's letters, where he addresses specific problems in one local church. Rather, this book is a summary of Jacob's sage wisdom for any and every community of Jesus's followers. And Jacob's goal isn't to teach new theological information. Rather, he wants to get in your business and challenge how you live. Jacob's wisdom has been heavily influenced by two sources. The first is Jesus's teaching about life in the kingdom of God, especially the Sermon on the Mount, which he's constantly echoing and quoting in the book. The second key influence is the biblical wisdom book of Proverbs, especially the poems in Proverbs 1 through 9. Jacob literally grew up with Jesus and with the book of Proverbs, and so now his own teachings sounds like them. It's stamped by their language and imagery. The book consists of short, challenging wisdom speeches that are full of metaphors and easy to memorize one-liners. And in essence, Jacob is calling the Messianic community to become truly wise by living according to Jesus's summary of the Torah, to love God and to love your neighbor as yourself. The body of the book is in chapters 2 through 5, which consist of 12 short teachings that call God's people to wholehearted devotion to the way of Jesus. And altogether, they don't develop one main idea in a linear way. Each teaching kind of stands alone and concludes with a catchy one-liner. But all of these teachings are connected through key repeated words and themes. It's really cool. At the opening of the book's body, there are two teachings. First, about favoritism and love. Jacob exposes how we tend to show favor to people who can benefit us, and we neglect people who can't, usually because they're needy. Jacob says this is the opposite of love, as Jesus defined it. He goes on to show what genuine faith does and does not look like. So if someone says that they have faith in God, but neglects people who are needy or poor, this person's faith is dead, he says. Their actions betray what they say they believe, and genuine faith always results in obedience to Jesus's teachings. Now scattered throughout the body of the book, we find three different places where Jacob develops Jesus's own teaching about our words. So with the same mouth, we unleash pain upon people and then go offer praise to God. So messed up. And also, we judge people and then go talk badly about them behind their backs. And we also all tend to distort the truth to our own advantage. How we talk about people opens up a window into our hearts and our core values. Our words tell the real truth about our character. Jacob also believes that God's kingdom community, as Jesus taught about it, is the kind of place where the divisions created by wealth and social status are dismantled. So he warns first about the arrogance that wealth can create in people who believe it will be around forever. He says, no, your wealth will one day rot, just like you. In contrast, God's people are to live with patience and hope for Jesus's return to set all things right. And this should inspire a life of faith-filled prayer. Now, this part of the book, all of these teachings, they're so powerful, and there's way more than we have time for in this video. But seriously, read all of them and slowly. Now, placed in front of these 12 wise teachings is the introductory chapter. It's a flowing stream of wise teachings and one-liners, and they're designed to sum up the main ideas of the entire book. This chapter actually introduces you to all the key words and themes that you're going to meet in chapters 2 through 5. Jacob opens by saying that he knows from personal experience, "Life is hard." He was martyred, after all, not long after writing this letter. But he believes that life's trials and hardships are actually paradoxical gifts that can produce endurance and shape our character. God can do amazing work inside of us in the midst of suffering and help us become perfect and complete. Now, that word "perfect," it's really important for Jacob. He repeats it seven times in the book. In biblical Hebrew and in Greek, this word refers to wholeness. It means living a completely integrated life, where your actions are always consistent with the values and beliefs that you've received from Jesus. Jacob knows that most of us actually live as fractured people with big inconsistencies in our character. We are all more compromised than we want to admit. However, God is on a mission to restore fractured people to make them whole, and it begins with wisdom, the ability to see my hardships through a new perspective. God will generously give this kind of wisdom to people who ask for it in faith, without doubting God's character. And when we realize our humble and frail place before God, we are forced to choose between anxiety or trust. And true wisdom means choosing to believe that God is good despite my circumstances. So if it's poverty that's forcing you into hard times in life, Jacob says, "Try and view it as a gift that forces you to trust in God alone." And besides, wealth is fleeting. It's all going to pass away like wildflowers in the summer heat. And so when we do fall into hard times, don't accuse God. Rather, let your circumstances teach you what Jesus taught about God's character, that the Father is generous, that he's there to meet us in our pain, and that he's trustworthy. It's this God who through Jesus has given us new birth to become new kinds of humans who can face their suffering with total trust in the Father, just like Jesus did. And this new humanity is something we discover when we not only listen to God's word, but do what it says. Jacob calls God's word here "the perfect Torah of freedom." He's referring here to the greatest command of the Torah, as passed on to us through Jesus, that he freed us to love God and love our neighbor. And Jacob shows practically what that kind of love looks like. It means speaking to others in a kind and loving way. It means serving the poor, and it means living with wholehearted devotion to God alone. Now you can see how this opening chapter contains all the key words and ideas explored more deeply in the 12 teachings of chapters 2 through 5. Jacob immersed himself in the wisdom of Jesus and of the Proverbs, and he's given us a great gift in this book of his own wisdom. This is a beautifully crafted punch in the gut for those who want to follow Jesus. And that is what the book of James, or Jacob, is all about.
Alright. Well, it's been good to have a certain time with you today. I don't know. Oh. There's somebody else there, isn't there? Let me go turn that off. There it goes. Thank you. Alright, can you hear me?
Yes.
Good. Alright, so we finished that, so, um, I love those things. They're great. The guy that does them is, I mean, boy, I can't imagine being able to do all that drawing and everything else, but. So I hope that was helpful. I think that they're really good for giving an overall understanding of what it is. But that's not what we're here to do. I mean, we're here to experience it ourselves. So before we jump into the letter, right, I wanted to talk a little bit about James, and not only who James was, but who we think that he was. Because there's a little bit of, uh, it's a difficult thing. We're not, we're not 100% sure. We're probably 90% sure until the next thing that develops. But I want to start this off by saying, does anybody remember the James ossuary? Have you ever, did you remember hearing about that? In 2005, so what happens in the ancient Near East, like Israel area, and, um, when, um, when people died, they had a tomb. And the body was laid on a stone in the tomb, and then once the body decayed, um, they would come and they would collect the bones, and they would put that into a carved stone box called an ossuary. And then, um, the ossuary would then be placed, they would, oftentimes, they would carve out a small niche in the tomb, and they would put it there. Sometimes it was covered with stones. And so entire families would be in here. So in 2005, all of a sudden, uh, this ossuary showed up, and it had, um, it had the inscription on it, Jacobin, so James, um, brother, uh, or sorry, son of Joseph, brother of Jesus. Now, there were no bones in it, but, um, but the inscription that was carved into it, and there's, there's a lot of artifacts that are faked. So this one was actually looked at by many, many different experts, and it was aged, and it, the age was right, and the experts say, you know, the style of the writing and the way that it's there, and the wear on it all looks like that it could be original. There was a tremendous amount of excitement in it. Um, and then all of a sudden, because this would have been one of the, the few, uh, physical things that would link, right, a real, live human to, to, um, to Jesus. And then, um, so then what happened was, they found out that, uh, where this actually came from, and it was a guy who's been known to fake a lot of artifacts, but really good. So there is a very convincing argument that it's not real. It's not real. But it resulted in an awful lot of things, and if you wanted to take some time and you can do the Google search on it, National Geographic did a special on it, 60 Minutes did a special on it, and there was one other one, maybe Discovery Channel. They all did, they all did, um, you know, either, uh, they did a whole show on it. In the case of 60 Minutes, it was a 20-minute thing. But very interesting, because they should go and they show a lot of the burial practices of the ancient, um, Near, Middle, Near East. And, um, so James, we believe, uh, was the brother of Jesus, but why do we believe that? And how did he come? Oh, because there was a James who was an apostle too. So let me go back over here and share the screen. We'll go through a little bit of that. Now, you're all welcome to ask questions as we go, and I have not muted anybody. The only read time I'll go mute somebody is if you get a lot of background noise and it's cutting in. So just to make sure that we can go on, but, so if you have a question, let me know. Share, Carrie is watching too. So there is a raise your hand thing that she can see. Uh, once I have my screen share, I can't see that, though, so. But the purpose here is that we're trying to all learn, so. If you don't ask the question, you don't learn. Alright. Come on. Alright, who was James? The author of this letter identifies himself as James. We believe he was probably the brother of Jesus, but when you say the brother, brother of Jesus, was that a full brother, or a half-brother, or a stepbrother? And we're gonna look into that a little bit. He was actually the leader in Acts 15. We can see that Paul goes, travels to Jerusalem, which we'll talk about in a little bit. Travels to Jerusalem, gets called to Jerusalem, and James, the brother of Jesus, is, uh, he identifies him as, um, as the brother of Jesus, and that he met with him, and that he was a pillar of the church in Jerusalem. So we're talking about the time that is post the resurrection, so post 33 A.D. We know from Paul's aspects that we're probably looking somewhere in the neighborhood of 45 to, um, 50, 58 to maybe 60. Probably more in the 50 A.D. range. And then, um, there was, um, there was a big thing, because there was an apostle James, who we know was martyred in 44 A.D. And then the traditional belief is that this James was brought on, uh, as an apostle by the group at that point. For people, the New Testament has the name. It gets really, really difficult and, and, um, it can become confusing. Um, there was an original apostle James, who's identified as the son of Zeppedy and the brother of John. Again, I just talked about him dying in 44. We know it can't be him, because this letter dates later than that. And then the other two men named James, uh, neither had the stature nor the influence that the writer of this letter had. So we think that based upon that, by not only what we know about this, but also through elimination, that, uh, it was probably James, the brother of James, but what was that relationship? Right? This is interesting to me, anyway. So, um, was he the younger brother of Jesus? Which meant that he was a son of Mary and Joseph? Now, so if he was the son of Mary and Joseph, would he be a full brother of Jesus or a half-brother? Think about that one, you know? Because we have the, you know, Mary was, you know, the belief that Mary was a virgin, you know, and so therefore it was God, so Joseph really wasn't the biological father, right? And so now, if they have other children, are they half-brothers or full brothers? So it's not, it's not a huge thing. But here's, let's look at the Gospels themselves and see what they say. Both Matthew and Mark say that he was miraculously conceived, and he was born of his mother Mary, while she was a virgin, right? And that they didn't consummate their marriage until she gave birth. And he is referred to as the firstborn son of Mary. So that could mean that there was other brothers, right? So James and the other brothers of Jesus are considered by many to be their younger half-brothers. And they're also described together without reference into any other, there's some, there's some script or references there. And, um, there's also some things, we're gonna talk about a few of these things in John 7, 2 through 5. And then, very strongly here, we have almost identical things that appear in Matthew 1354 and Mark 6. I read, uh, both of them. This is talking about Jesus. "Jesus came to his hometown and began to teach the people in their synagogue, so that they were astounded and said, 'Where did this man get his wisdom and these deeds of power? Is not this the carpenter's son? Is not his mother called Mary, and are not his brothers James and Joseph and Simon and Judas? And are not all his sisters with us?" So, very clear there that, um, that Jesus, Mary and Joseph had other children, both. At least, um, they had four sons, and they had multiple daughters. Mark is very similar, a little, it spreads it out a little bit more, and says, "Jesus left that place and came to his hometown, and his disciples followed him. On the Sabbath, he began to teach in the synagogue, and many who heard him were astounded. They said, 'Where did this man get all this? What is this wisdom that has been given to him? What deeds of power are being done by his hands? Is not this the carpenter, the son of Mary and the brother of James and Jo, and Moses, you know, and Judas and Simon, and are not his sisters here with him?" So, that is pretty solid evidence, which would definitely make him the younger brother, whether it be half or full. So here's an old guy from just before 400 A.D., and he looked at that, and he was saying, "Well, did Mary have any other children?" And then, um, Jerome, who was another writer, another famous theologian, ancient, a little bit after, Hell of, Hell of ideas. And he goes, he came on the perpetual virginity of the Blessed Mary as an answer to it, right? So he's saying that this is the church's teachings at this time, at about 400 A.D., that the term "firstborn" was used to refer to any offspring that opened the womb. And rather than definitely implying other children, Luke's reporting of the visit of Mary, Joseph, and Jesus to the temple of Jerusalem when Jesus was born, makes no reference to any of Jesus's half-brothers. So what they're talking about here is that this is in, um, in Matthew, when, uh, Jesus gets left in the temple, and there, uh, they had been there for Passover, and as they start to head back to, um, back to their hometown, they realize they don't have them. So they go back, and they find them there. And what they're saying is, hey, they didn't talk about any, any of his other brothers? So, you know, did he not have them? So this sets up the thought process of saying, well, were they really brothers, or were they, were they maybe cousins? So. No, that's not what I wanted to do.
So Tim, is that considered kind of a controversial thing? Whether Jesus had, um, brothers or sisters? The only reason I ask is I remember my mom asked me about Jesus having brothers, and she was raised Catholic, so maybe they didn't touch upon that?
It's only, um, it's only a big deal depending upon, it's only a big deal depending upon, um, your denomination.
Because of the Virgin Mary aspect?
Correct. Exactly. Correct, exactly, exactly. So that's really big with the Catholic Church, right? So they have to keep that perpetual virginity of Mary. So then they say, well, no, he couldn't have been, there was no further children, right? It was just, it was, she, because she was always a virgin. So they've said, well, how, how can we, they clearly talk about Jesus's brother. And how can they deal with that? So. Let me just go down here a little bit here and get back on track.
So they just don't talk about it is the main thing.
No, they do, they do. Well, just watch, watch this one. So then they say, oh, this is four hundred A.D. Since we have to keep that, that tenet of the perpetual virginity of marriage. So maybe they were older than Jesus. And that they were the sons of Joseph by an earlier marriage. So that's kind of what was developed there, so.
So do we, do we know that Joseph was married before? I never knew that.
No, we don't know that. Don't know that at all. The only thing that supports this, right? Think about this is the only thing that supports this is that Joseph disappears after that. After that event at the temple when Jesus is twelve years old. There's no mention of Jo- well, we don't have anything until Jesus then, you know, begins. There's all, there's what, twelve? Eight, there's eighteen years there, there, where there's no, there's no description of what he did, where he is. But we do know that is, that Joseph was no longer around when he started his ministry. So could that mean that? No, so could that mean that, could that mean that he was an older gentleman, right, and passed? So therefore you had that. It would not be unusual. The, the marriage, the marriage rituals back then would say. If. If a brother died, right? The older brother of the brother that died would take, would take his wife if he was unmarried. And the, and the brother who died was married. That was very common. So perhaps, and, and there's even a little bit deeper intrigue that we'll get into. That says if that was the case, what, what would this look like? And so we won't spend a lot of time on it, but. So there it was. So they're saying that Mary was already, was betrothed to Joseph and he already had children. So therefore James would have been his stepbrother. So here we are back around four hundred A.D. When this argument first started to get there was. He said that father, that the Joseph became the father of James and his three brothers and two sisters. Now, this is where they're starting to put some names to the sisters. They are not called out in any gospel, but what we do know is that it says that his family was around. At the time of his crucifixion in John, I believe, and there was a Salome and a Mary. Right? Or a Salomon and Anna, depending upon the gospel that you read. So, and James being the oldest of it, right? They were not children of Mary, but they were Joseph's children from a previous marriage. And after Joseph's first wife died many years later, when he was eighty. These are people talking in four hundred A.D. He took Mary, the mother of Jesus, according to that, Phineas. The scriptures call them brothers of the Lord to confound their opponents. So there's a lot of, there's, there's a lot of legend that's being built here, right? So that's important to understand. Usually the, the real solution to any problem is the most simplest and the one, the more complex that the story gets, the more unlikely that it is. Give you that as an example. So, but they were searching for support for that. So Jesus in John, right? Jesus, well, Jesus trusts the care of his mother while he was, while he was on his walk to the cross, right? He asked John, and who they don't think is a blood relative of Jesus. And to take care of Mary. Now that would have fallen to the next oldest son, right? So they're saying, well, that's evidence here that, that James and all the other mentions that they weren't married son. So. So that's one argument. I don't. I don't think it's a strong one, but that's an argument. And then also the nature of the language that's used to transcribe these, both Aramaic and Hebrew. Right? They use this thing called circumlocum, circumlocutions to point out blood relationships. In other words, so they're saying, when you say it's a brother. It doesn't necessarily mean that it's a blood relative, it could mean a cousin. And such like that. So they're saying, well, you know, look, the Greek says that it's a blood brother, but it was actually referred to originally in the Aramaic and Hebrew. So there was an, they're, they're saying that there was a mistake made. When, when they trance, when they translated it into the original Greek. So here's another argument cousin, which would mean that he would be a son of a sister of Mary. That argument goes these lines. James, along with the others named brothers of Jesus are said by others to have been Jesus's cousin. Justified by the fact that cousins were also called brothers and sisters in Aramaic, which we just kind of touched on. Which like biblical Hebrew does not contain a word for cousin. Furthermore, the Greek word adelphos, right? And then Delphi, those, that means brother and sister. Were not restricted to the meaning of a literal brother or sister in the Bible, nor were their plurals, which would be adelphos and adelphi. Here's a guy, two seventy-five, Isubius of Caesarea reports at the tradition that James the Just was the son of Joseph's brother, Kapos. And therefore was of the brothers when each interprets as a cousin of Jesus described in the New Testament. There's a Kapos in the Bible.
Tim, I have a question.
Yes, go ahead.
They were saying that the word, that there was no such word as cousin. But yet, when they talked about Mary's cousin Elizabeth was done the Baptist. So was that just for our translation?
Right. Well, you know, that's a good question. Sure, I, I don't know, I have to, I'd have to go back and take a look at the original. Language, because they're making the argument that you can't tell whether it's a, a sister or brother or a cousin. Based upon, because when you make that transliteration, translation step from Hebrew to Greek.
Right.
I don't know, that's a good question. So here's an interesting one. So this is again Jerome, he had a lot, he had a lot to say back then, he was very powerful. And he said that James is said to be the son of another Mary, a wife of Kapos and the sister of Mary, right? The mother of Jesus. So. You know, James, who is called the brother of the Lord, surname the Just, this is him writing, the son of Joseph by another wife is something. But as it appears to me, the son of Mary, sister of the mother of our Lord, whom John makes mention in his book. Remember there was Mary, they called that Mary Magdalene, Mary, the mother of Jesus and the other Mary. When they were, when they were going to the tomb.
Yeah, but why would Mary have a sister named Mary? That seems weird.
You know? It's Larry, Daryl and Daryl. Jerome refers to the scene of the crucifixion, there it is, where it's Mary, Mary of Kapos and Mary Magdalene are said to be witnesses, so. I'm just giving you, this is, I'm not saying that I buy into these, this argument. That's the same one. All right. So Jen, Jerome goes on and says, well, we still have this James. So it's James the Just who writes this book, right? And then with the apostle James, the son of Alpheus. And he says that Klopas, who was married to, married to Mary's sister, Mary. Are you confused yet? Are thought to be different Greek renderings, the same name. Cloud fight. I don't buy this, right? The, but it says. It's not the cat, it's, it's just a traditional teaching that, that Jerome did, right? We're getting to the end of this, folks, so we can actually start looking at some of this stuff. So this was the, one of the last ones is that. That after Joseph dies, right? So she has Jesus, they don't have any more children. Now she marries Klopas, who was Joseph's brother, right? So following along in the tradition. And then he accepts as the younger brother of Joseph. And then according to this, Klopas then father James and later siblings, but of course not Jesus. Well. If we're confused now, right? This identification that we talk about with James, with the son of Alpheus and James the less lesser, right? And a Mary is also mentioned as the mother of James the younger and of Joseph in the Gospel of Mark. Here's this, it says some women were watching from, this was, this is an account of the crucifixion. So women were watching from a distance. Among them were Mary Magdalene, Mary, the mother of James, the James the younger and of Joseph and Salome. On the other hand, this is, we're back out of the Gospels. Another Mary is mentioned as the mother of James and of a Joseph in the Gospel of Matthew and the Gospel of Mark. Let's take a look at that. When the Sabbath was over, Mary Magdalene, Mary, the mother of James and Salome brought spices so that they might go and anoint Jesus's body. Among them were Mary Magdalene, Mary, the mother of James and Joseph. And the mother of deputy sons. Deputy sons were James and John. So we've got three Marys that are there. But although this is good to talk about. Most scholars now believe that this James, who wrote this book, was a later child of Joseph and Mary. So the Catholic doctrine of the perpetual virginity precludes that. So therefore there are other theories that have developed. But there are some of them are stretches and I think that we could also know that. It's probably, there was a close familial relationship there between James and, between Jesus and James and his other brothers. Not only James takes a position in the later church, but some of the other ones do, but it wasn't always this way, right? So in John seven, their family, the family had some real concerns about Jesus. And here's an example of this in John seven, one through nine. After this, Jesus went about in Galilee. He did not wish to go about in Judea because the Jews were looking for an opportunity to kill him. Now, the Jewish festival of booze, let's also new succot, was near. So his brother said to him, leave here and go to Judea so that your disciples also may see the works you are doing. For no one who wants to be widely known acts in secret. If you do these things, show yourself to the world, for not even his brothers believed in him. Jesus said to them, my time has not yet come, but your time is always here. The world cannot hate you, but it hates me because I testify against it. And it works or evil, go to the festival yourselves. I am not going to this festival for my time is not yet fully come. And after saying this. He can't read that, it's down there. He remained in Galilee. It goes on to say that he actually then goes to the festival. But what we're seeing here is the fact that, you know, there was some discord between the family and Jesus and what, and, and the start of his ministry, right? They're saying, you know, gosh, we're tired of you, will you get out of here? He said, you know, you go to this, go, go over here, go to this festival, you know, if you're so great. You know, show this stuff to other people, you can't, can't just hide it, you know, just go. And he's saying, well, my time has not yet come. So he tells that to his mother too, in the beginning of John, at the wedding at Cana. You remember that he says, you know, she says, hey, we got a problem here, we're out of wine, do your thing. Then she, and he goes, woman, it's not my time yet. You notice that he obeys his mother, he really does. But here's, here's another one, and this is the one that just, I, I just giggle about this. This is in Mark, chapter three. This is, Jesus went up to the mountain and called, and called to them those whom he wanted, and they came to him. And he appointed twelve, whom he also named apostles to be with him and to be sent out to proclaim the message. And to have authority to cast out demons. So he appointed the twelve, Simon, to whom he gave the name Peter. James, son of Zebedee, and John, the brother of James, to whom he gave the name of. Onurgis, yeah, that is the sons of thunder. And Andrew and Philip and Bartholomew and Matthew and Thomas and James, son of Alpheus and Thaddeus. And Simon of, and Caesarea and Judas Iscariot who betrayed him. This is, this is like one of the few times where we see all twelve of the disciples' names that's there. And you'll see that there's a James there, but it's called out that it's, 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 the James that's called out is not Ja- the James who writes this book. But what about, so then he went home, Jesus, and the crowd came together again so that they could not even eat. When his family heard it, they went out to restrain him. For the people were saying, he has gone out of his mind. And the scribes who came down from Jerusalem said, he has beazable. And by the ruler of the demons, he casts out demons. And he called them to him and he spoke to them in parables. How can Satan cast out Satan? If a kingdom is divided against itself, that kingdom cannot stand. And if a house is divided against itself, that house will not be able to stand. And if Satan has risen up against himself and is divided, he cannot stand, but his end has come. But no one can enter a strong man's house and plunder his property without first tying up to strong man. Then indeed, the house can be plundered. So. This first part here is that, you know, Jesus is, he's really attacking this new ministry. And he's casting out demons. And the word has come out and, and so they're, the family, when they hear about all these things that he's doing, right? They go there and they go, they, they tried to stop him, saying, hey, people are saying, you're, you're crazy, you're crazy. But he keeps going out. Now he points out the fact that, you know, the, the scribes come and say, hey, if you're casting out the devil, it's because you are the devil in yourself. And Jesus is this second, this last part of it is all an argument that Jesus that says, hey, you know, the devil can't cast out the devil. So it's only a thing, something that's more powerful. But that continues on, truly I tell you, people will be forgiven their sins and whatever blasphemies they utter. But whoever blasphemies against the Holy Spirit can never have forgiveness. But is guilty of an eternal sin, for they had said, he has an unclean spirit. Then his mothers and his brothers came and standing outside, they sent to him and called to him. This actually appeared both in Matthew and Luke also. Just a crowd was sitting out around it and they said to him, your mother and your brothers and your sisters are outside asking for you. And he replied, who are my mothers and brothers? And looking at those who sat around him, he said, here are my mother and my brothers. Whoever does the will of God is my brother and sister and mother. So he's really, you know, they're saying, get them out of there, we gotta get them home. And they, and so he looks around and he just says, at this point, he walks away from his family at that point. For the purposes of the gospel. All right, so what did this James, that wrote this letter, what did he do? He became very influential in the Jerusalem church. This is after, of course, the church is formed in the Book of Acts. We read about it in Acts, anywhere from basically chapter seven and continuing all the way up into chapter eighteen. There's lots of stuff that happened, probably in the forty-five to fifty area. That's in Acts fifteen through seventeen, there is really interesting to read if you get a chance. James the Great, who was the first, he was a son of Zebedee. He was martyred in forty-four A.D. And it's believed that James the Lesser, like this is why they called him the Lesser. The brother of Jesus replaced him. And they set the, Peter and him set the direction to the church. And then in Acts fifteen, and also in Galatians, so Acts fifteen written by Luke, Galatians written by Paul. They talk about the same thing, the council of Jerusalem where Paul is called to Jerusalem because they want to ask him questions. Because he's been out traveling around, Paul's been out traveling around and has created churches. But he's really doing a lot with Gentiles, which is non-Jewish people. So, and there's a big argument within the church saying, is this, is this for everybody or is this just for Jewish people? So when they get there, they argue about it. And Peter and Paul end up arguing, who's going to be the apostle to the Gentiles? And they never really settle it. They both feel that that's their, that's their calling. But James remains firmly in the area of the conversion of Jews. So he's never, James, the James who writes this letter is writing to a strictly Jewish converted audience. And then Peter ends up getting into trouble in Jerusalem and he has to flee. So James becomes the leader, which probably became known as a bishop at that time of the Jerusalem church. And then he himself is killed in sixty-four A.D. We know that for a fact. Right? And it was, it was brutal. It was just brutal. I'm going to show you. This is an artwork of it. That's the temple in Jerusalem. And what had happened was the Romans were still there, but the Roman, the Roman governor had left the area and was out. And while he was gone, a chief priest grabbed power and formed the Sanhedrin, which hadn't existed since the time of Christ. And they brought James up on charges and convicted him. And they said that they took him to the top, the pinnacle of the, of the temple in Jerusalem, and they threw him off. And the fall did not kill him. And so then they beat him with a stick to kill him. So this really, really brutal. And that, this is, this is not simply, this is not simply a legend because it's actually talked about in some of the two extant, which means existing. The stor- histories that we have of that time and the both of that, and Josephus is the big one. He was only writing thirty years after the time of that. So he was, you know, he, he tells it. And he also tells the fact that it was so appalling that the Jewish people complained against this priest to Rome, which that was really unusual. It had to be really bad. And that Rome's inaction on it began the Jewish revolt that, or began the process of the Jewish revolt, which ended up happening in seventy A.D. And this, this results in the destruction of the temple, the second temple. And they believe they tied it all back to this murder of this king. All right. Everybody all right? Right, what about questions?
Tim, I'm gonna have to leave. I've gotta go get groceries there.
Okay.
Kroger, but anyway, I could get the slide presentation because there was so much information and I would love to review it.
Yeah, yeah, sure. So if you, anybody wants to, the best way to do that is just to drop me a note.
Yeah, okay.
Pastor, my real email address, pastortim@allenparkpress.org.
Okay.
Right? Apparently there's people, I got a call from Bill Caldwell Caldwell today out in, in Colorado. And he says, I keep getting emails that you, that you need to talk to me.
He's also sending out spam email.
Is he?
Yeah, I got one.
Yeah, he's sending out spam email. I had to block him, but I feel bad.
It's not him, it's just.
Yeah, I just, I just erased it. I knew it wasn't from Bill.
So yes, Cheryl, I can do that for you and anybody else that wants to too. All right?
Thank you, it's very interesting.
Well, it sets you up. So now you can pick it up and, and, and read through. And in fact, if you could, you know, before we get together again, when we settle that in, if you can probably try to read through chapter three, it would be really cool.
Okay.
All right?
Will do, thank you. Have a great night, everybody.
Bye Cheryl.
Bye Cheryl.
Good night Cheryl.
Good night.
Oh, there you go, Carrie, I saw the chat, you put it in there. That's so helpful, thank you. So you want to read a little bit?
Yeah.
All right. Share the screen, share the screen. Enter reading mode, where are you? Oh, that's not what I wanted. You guys can't, you guys can't recognize that. There it is. So that was what you just saw up there was, I have the ability on this thing that I can actually have the Greek appear right underneath the English. So when Cheryl asks that question, that's what I'm going to do when we're done. I'm going to go back and take a look. And I'll take a look at the actual Greek to see what it says there. So let's read a little bit here, we'll go through again. This is the, this is the night where we introduced it, right? And so we're going to get into the introduction and anything that we do beyond that is all bonus and everything like that. But the most important thing is to ask questions, right? I will tell you this before we start, this is a very common, it follows the same structure of a typical letter of the time. And so it means that there's an issue, but it doesn't necessarily get brought up right away. There's a lot of preliminaries that can put in. And this is also uses a, that uses a arguing methodology that has been called the diatribe, right? Which means that you basically overpower people with your arguments. So the, this letter is believed to exhibit that. He just, James just smothers it and doesn't, doesn't allow anything else to come to the surface. So here we go. James, a servant of God and of the Lord Jesus Christ, to the twelve tribes and the dispersion. Greetings. You know, stop right there. So this tells the twelve tribes and the disparate, in the dispersion. So this is the twelve tribes of Israel, which harkens back to the Old Testament time, of course. And the dispersion refers to the diaspora, which means that people were, they were no longer allowed to congregate at all, within Jerusalem. So that means that they were dispersed. So he is writing to Jewish people and he's appealing to their, to their heritage and the fact that they're, they're not, they can't be together in the, the city on the hill, which is, which is Jerusalem.
So could I ask you a question now?
Absolutely.
All right. I, when I was reading that, was thinking the dispersion occurred when the Jewish people had been dispersed by that first emperor that, that came in. And when the seventy years had passed, that there was that rebuilding of Jerusalem. But not everybody came back after seventy years. And that's when I was thinking that he was writing to these people that were still.
You're right. Yeah, but that was, that was in five eighty-seven B.C. So that was almost, almost six hundred years before this. That diaspora. So, but there was also, from that time on though, or there was, there was Jews that existed throughout the Middle East because not everybody did come back. So, so some of this letter could be to people that are in the, you know, that are in, in the Babylonian very, very, have been, have been outside of Jerusalem for a very, very long time. But we also know that because of the, because of the issues that are going on, the Roman Empire was doing everything they can to not let people come back to Jerusalem and let people congregate there. Does that help? Because the, the Babylonian exile, as they call it, was in five eighty-seven B.C. And then, and then it was a full generation, they lost everybody, not anybody was left. When Cyrus allowed people to come back and they actually built the temple at that point, which was the second temple, because the first had been torn down. And the second one was not anywhere near the physical stature of the first one, although the second one was apparently pretty impressive on its own. And then, and then the temple gets destroyed, that second temple gets destroyed in seventy A.D., which we just talked about the, the revolt that, of the Jewish people against Rome. And so they really put it down by destroying the temple at that point. All right, James two, my brothers and sisters, whenever you face trials of any kind, considerate nothing but joy, because you know that the testing of your faith produces endurance. And let endurance have its full effect so that you may be mature and complete, lacking in nothing. So our, our overview touched on this really well, right? So it's saying, he's saying, look, we, we're writing to the dispersion. He's saying, we can't be together. So he's saying, you know, you're being persecuted. So whenever you face trials, you know, turn that smile upside down. It's nothing but joy, or turn that frown upside down because you know that the testing of your faith, so it's a test, right? And if you, if you live into it, you're going to learn what endurance is. And then when that endurance blossoms to its fullness, you can be mature and complete, lacking in nothing. So this wholeness aspect that we see in, in verse four, in the verse four is really important. And that's, that's a highly Jewish consideration. If we consider Shalom, peace, it's much more than just a lack of war. That's, that means that everything in your life is interlocked and, and is working well, so.
Okay, I have one other thought and that, that verse three.
Yeah.
It says, because you know, because you know.
Yeah.
And he's writing to these people. He's saying to them, you already know that the testing of your faith produces endurance. You already know this.
Yeah.
Now he's, but I think he's encouraging us through this because maybe we haven't, you know, at this point in our lives gone through some of this. But I'm just, you know, surmising some things.
I, I would agree with you, Art. I would agree with you. I mean, let's, I mean, take, take this, I always, when I, I always try to, when I read, I'm saying, now, what would be like this, right? And I have a real easy comparison now, you know, it's like, we're going through this, this, this whole coronavirus, right? And we are, we are exactly where we don't want to be. We're separated, our freedoms that are mean so much to us as Americans are, are, I don't want to say infringed, but we're not able to do things that we want to, when we want to do them, right? And so I think that James would say, hey, this is a test, right? And so use it, use it for the good, right? Because have faith, know that this is just a short term thing and that at the end it's going to change. And so then you're going to learn that you can, you can get through an awful lot of stuff. And, and, and then you're going to be more mature and complete. And so if that, if I apply that to this, I will tell you that there's a lot of people that failed this test. No, we got people that say, yes, go ahead.
It's Barbara, where you said endurance, my version says patience in both parts. So the Greek translate both ways on that?
Good, good. It's, the, the word could be, what, what version are you using?
It's the New King, King James.
Yeah.
It's more readable, but it's.
Yeah. So it would not be unusual. The good news is, is that since the same word appears twice, that they use the same, the same translation both times. Sometimes it's not the case. So, but patience and endurance are kind of the, I mean, we can see the linkage between those, right? So it's just, it's just a decision that whoever is making the translation thought that it sounded better. And a lot of times the choices of words are made in the context of what's going on. And, you know, like an example would be if, if we use, you know, we could say groovy, then we would know what that meant, right? And, but yet I would imagine that if, you know, if some, if, if we had used that term or we use that term in thirty years, people are going to say, what are they talking about? These things had, you know. Yeah, exactly, exactly. So, so yeah, patience and endurance, I think that you're going to see those. And actually, that's a great thing. If you're look, if you're reading along in your Bible and you see that there's a difference that puzzles you, you know, bring it up, bring it up. Perseverance, another good one, right? Endurance, patience, perseverance. I heard two people talk at the same time. So why doesn't the male voice talk first?
I've got steadfastness.
Steadfastness. And who was the other person?
It was Barb, I'm just saying that all those terms you use is what we're going through in this pandemic, staying home. All three apply.
As I said, I got a lot of friends that failed. So this, so he, I mean, the, the message here, the lesson here is, you know, hey, hard times happen. And, you know, don't use them for the best, use them for the, you know, use them for, for, to improve yourself rather than to feel sorry for yourself. So go on here to verse five, if any viewer is lacking in wisdom, ask God, who gives to all generously and ungrudgingly, and it will be given to you. But ask in faith, never doubting, for the one who doubts is like a wave of the sea, driven and tossed by the wind. But the doubter, being double minded and unstable in every way, must not expect to receive anything from the Lord. Oh, that one's. What somebody's, anybody ever thought about this one?
Yes, I have. And, and I wonder if this, I mean, I think, I think about different things that, that hit me. And, and there I am, wondering. And, and I, I'm never quite clear when he's describing this, just how if, if the Holy Spirit is the one who's guiding us and, and if we choose not to hear him or, or whatever, then I'm not quite sure. I, I'm, I'm kind of lost with this one, that's all I can say. I, I flounder, that's.
Okay. So let, you're, you're, I guarantee you, you're not the, the only one, Art, right? So here's just, and I don't say, and I know either, but I spent, I spent a lot, I will spend a lot of time listening to people say, oh, when you get into this thing. So remember that the first, that, that verses two through four that we just read before, that we understood, right? That made a statement, and now he's leading into this. So that's all about having, living through things and having faith and having the endurance, the patience to go through this. So then he's saying, well, now if you're lacking in wisdom, which is knowledge, right? So now you're saying, I don't know why I'm going through this, but if you're at, if you don't, you know, we can endure things, but it gets a little bit easier if we know what we're enduring. So if you don't have that wisdom, that knowledge, ask God, right? Because God gives it to you all the time, all right? If you ask, you receive it, you will get it. But make sure that when you ask for that knowledge, that, 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 that your faith is complete. That you don't even have a kernel of doubt in your mind. Because if you have, somebody who doubts is just tossed around by the conditions that they find themselves in. They'll never set their eyes on something that's, that's in the, you know, that's out there and swim through that storm to get to it. They're just going to go wherever the storm is taking them. So, does that help?
Yeah, I want to just bounce this back at you as to what I'm hearing you say. So if I'm struggling with something and, and I'm, and I'm talking to God about this, whatever the struggle is, will, the Holy Spirit will reveal something to us. I mean, at least I think so. I, I mean, at times I've seen it. will, the Holy Spirit will reveal something to us. I mean, at least, I think so. I, I mean, at times, I've seen it. I'm not saying I've seen it instantly. But I wonder if that's how, if this wisdom thing that you're talking about, or this learning thing is what you're referring to.
Right. So I have a thought, uh, Sherry, Sherry raised her hand.
Yes, um, you said something about, and your faith's complete.
Yeah.
What does, what do you mean by that?
I said that?
Yes.
So, when your faith is complete, uh, what I meant was it's a hundred percent that, that if you allow, you can say, oh, I have faith, right? But then if you have that little bit of doubt that comes in, all of a sudden, now that's just, that's allowed that crack in the tent, and all of a sudden the water comes, you know, flowing in. I'll give you an example. I, I, I do this really silly thing in the summer, and in fact, I have this little sixteen foot sailboat. And I go out and I race it against other people. And the way that, the way that, um, that, that sailboat races start is that they have a time. And they, they set a line, which is between a boat and a buoy. And then they blow horns, and so you know exactly when the race is gonna start, and you try to get your boat to that line and moving, um, before everybody else. So you get a good start. And for years and years and years, I got terrible starts, because I was always afraid I was gonna be over the line early, right? So I would be going, and I'd say, okay, now I'm gonna go, I'm gonna be aggressive here. And then I go, oh, I don't want to be over early. And then I would just sit there, right? So, but now I learned, you know what? I just gotta be aggressive. And I just gotta do that. And if I take that chance, that I might be over the line early, and if that happens, they call my number, and I have to go back. And that means I start behind everybody. But before I was aggressive, I was starting behind everybody anyway, right? So, so there it is. So it's like, I just can't have that doubt. When I'm, when I'm getting ready for that start, I don't allow doubt into my head, because I just say, I just gotta do, I just gotta do. And I think that this, um, is when we're, when we're, when we're getting battled about, because again, this letter's being written to people who are being persecuted, that, um, it's really easy to get worn down by it, and to start to have doubts that whether God is really there and God exists. Or that God loves us.
And that was my second question. I mean, in being a minister, have you come across many Christians that have complete faith or faith completed?
Hmm. Yeah. I mean, yeah, I, I, there's people, there's people in this church that have, that I think that, you know, have, have faith. The hardest thing is, here's the difficulty. How do you? How many of us actually hear, clear as a bell, God speaking to us, saying, do this? You know, that doesn't, it's not the way that it goes. So we need to open up our receptors to say, okay, well, the Holy Spirit's gonna be here, and the Holy Spirit's gonna make things available to us and opportunities. And then you need to follow them.
But how do you discern your will against God's will? I mean, I could, yeah, I should, you know, do this. But how do I know that that's not just something I want, and, or something God wants for me? How do you discern?
Prayer. Prayer. I mean, you just pray over it. You know, um, Meg is on here, so, you know, I, I, let me give you another example. Us leaving Homer to come here, right? We, um, we were under no pressure to leave Homer. But it had, but God had spoken very clearly to us through a number of ways, saying, you know what? We think, I, I think that you need to be, I have another plan for you. You know, thank you for doing this, but we have another plan for you somewhere. And that was long before we ever knew about uh, Allen Park. So that gave us the strength to get through and to start to listen, you know, to look for, okay, if God is serious about this and wants us to leave and do something else, then let's find out where that might be. Now, we had said, we had said that we think that that means that we're gonna find a church that's at least halfway closer to our cottage than where we were in Homer. On the west side of the state. Allen Park is not close. Allen Park's further away, right? So that is, so that became, wait a second, you know, well, God, really? Is that it? But we just, but to have that perseverance, that patience, to pray through it, to, to recognize, take the chance and say, hey, you know, it doesn't hurt to talk, it doesn't hurt to, to go look. And then, and then it, it just became crystal clear, crystal clear by about the third or fourth time that we met with the, with the PNC, that this was, this was probably where we were, this was probably where we were supposed to be. And, and, uh, but it didn't start out that way.
Is that how you would suggest someone to grow their faith? Like, cause I'm in the middle of the faith thing, like, you know, fifty fifty. I'm a, you know, I'm a pessimist by nature, so so take small little tasks and, and say, okay, God, here and.
You know, I'm gonna surrender this to you.
Okay.
And then part of that, Sherry, I mean, part of it, my, part of it's realizing that we don't really control that much. You know, at the end of the day. So when we just say, all right, you know, Lord, um, this is out of my control, and I'm gonna trust you. I'm gonna trust, not that you, not that you're gonna make this come out the way that I want it to. But I'm gonna trust that you're gonna take this to the way that it's best for, for you, right? And that you care and you love for me, and I will come through this hole. And I will be, I will be more complete in my faith at the end of this trial than I was when I started it.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah. Okay, so we're all set? Through go, we're okay through five through eight? Now I gotta move it. This is, gets difficult. All right, James, nine through eleven. So we talked about this wisdom, getting wisdom from it leads to faith. Now it says, let the believer who is lowly boast in being raised up and the rich in being brought low, because the rich will disappear like a flower in the field. Where the sun rises with its scorching head and withers in the, withers the field, its flower falls and its beauty perishes. It is the same way with the rich. In the midst of a busy life, they will wither away. Okay. So this is, we talked about, we're gonna hear as we read through this, or as you read through this, you'll hear that there's a lot of echoes of the Sermon on the Mount from Matthew five through seven. But there's also echoes of Proverbs, and this is one, you know, like, and this is the one where the, uh, uh, the grass withers and the flower fades, but the word of the Lord endures. So he's, he's using, he's echoing this right here. But he specifically, he specifically calls out the rich. And, and, uh, probably because the people that he's writing to are not rich. And the people that are persecuting them are. Right? And I think that he's saying here, don't equate rich with ultimate power. Because money, money goes away. Right? And, um, so, and as soon as, and then, but the one thing I struggle with here is in the midst of a busy life, they will wither away. I don't, I'm not sure what that means. Anybody have an idea?
Can't take it with you.
Yeah.
Or they lose sight in the middle of trying to gain whatever they need, that they lose themselves to Christ.
Yeah.
Worship.
They're more worried about, sorry, they're more worried about where they're going as opposed to why they're going to wherever it is they're going. Or you're, they're so tied up with their business, that the really important stuff in life withers away, and they're, they're concentrating on the wrong things. That's why I read it.
Yeah. Where the sun rises with its scorching heat and withers the field, the flower falls and beauty perishes. Same way with.
When I was, uh, when I was probably about eighteen, nineteen, for whatever reason, I started dwelling on the idea of, um, my life as I moved along. I was in the service at that point. And, and I saw myself, you know, getting to some place, financially, work wise, whatever. So, but as I looked at it and just observed the whole thing to a point of retirement, I saw myself with nothing. I saw myself with, yeah, I made a lot of money and I'm doing well. But relationships were totally wiped out. I had nothing. And, and I thought to myself, I don't want to be that way. And on, I was at that age. I don't know, um, you know, whether this is totally a fact, but sometimes I do think uh, that relationships are quite important.
Yeah.
Art, that was a nice thing to say and reveal. Thank you.
It, it was a nice personal thought to share.
That's so deep, and I'm glad that you reevaluated all of that. So, good for you.
Thank you.
I looked at, um, the NIV right here, and it says, this, um, that verse eleven there reads, where the sun rises with scorching heat and withers the plant, its blossom falls and its beauty is destroyed. In the same way, the rich will fade away even while they go about their business. So, um, so their business is the way that they're making money, and the, and the money is the most important thing in their, in their life. And, um, but I think you're right, Art. I think you touched on something there. And, and also John did too, is the fact that, you know, you make money, you're God. Jesus talks about wealth, that he doesn't talk about money being evil. He's, what he really says is that the love of money is, is the root of all evil. He thinks that that really separates people from their faith. Because money provides a sense of security. And it does, right? You know, if you have money, you can buy things. You can, you can make sure that you're not gonna be homeless and things like that. But if, um, but then if, but if, a lot of times that makes you think that you're very powerful. You know, and that, that you control more than you really do. And the fact of the matter is, is that in the wink of an eye, you know, riches can be, can be eliminated. And look, look at, you know, look at whenever the stock market tumbles. And, um, and how many people are devastated? You know, it's like their whole lives have changed. What's really changed? They, they just, they don't have as much money as they had on the other day. They might be more afraid, right? But nothing's changed. They're still people.
And in actuality, they don't have any less money. It's paper money out there, and unless they cash it in, they haven't lost anything yet, because it will go back up.
That's what my stockbroker says.
Well, i- i- if only it's true, that we hope.
All right. Well, that helps. Thank you very much, everyone. That helps me. Let's go on to verse twelve. So blessed is anyone who endures temptation. Such a one has stood the test and will receive the crown of life that the Lord has promised to those who love him. No one when tempted should say, I am being tempted by God, for God cannot be tempted by evil, and he himself tempts no one. But one is tempted by one's own desire, being lured and enticed by it. Then when the desire has conceived, it gives birth to sin. And that sin, when fully grown, gives birth to death. Do not be deceived, my lover. So sin, um, hamartia is the Greek word for it. Um, but really what it means is separation from God, right? We always think that sin is a, is a one specific activity. But really what it is, it's the action which separates us from God. And I kind of like that better, especially nowadays. So, you know, uh, a lot of times when you're, when we're leading people, new believers, and, uh, nobody wants to think that they're a sinner. They're like, yeah, I'm pretty good. I don't, I don't go around doing that stuff. And, and, um, you know, so if you say, hey, our separation from God, it's a gent, it's a gentler way of getting to the same point. So um, I think that that has a lot of benefits to it. But what he's talking about here now is, uh, temptation, right? And just like as Jesus was tempted, but he was perfect, so he couldn't, so he didn't, he didn't give in to that when he was tempted by the devil. But, um, you know, temptation is there, and if you withstand at once, you prove to yourself how strong you can be.
Tim?
Yes?
Can I read, um, verse twelve out of the Bible that I have, which is the one we use at third and fourth grade camp?
Yep, love to. Go ahead.
Blessed is the person who keeps on going when times are hard. After they have come through hard times, this person will receive a crown. The crown is life itself. The Lord has promised it to those who love him. Isn't that great?
Yeah. Yeah. So the crown of life that he's talking about. So, so get through temptation, face up to it at least once in your life in a major way, and then you find out that it really doesn't have any power over you. But the hard thing is, is that, you know what? Why did, why do people give in to temptation?
Just sinful.
It's our nature?
It's our nature to be sinful.
You're a true Presbyterian.
I am.
Totally correct.
Often it seems like it's easier.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We, weakness.
Faster reward.
It's a shortcut.
We deserve it, you know?
How about this? You know, I need to do that because I'm not good enough to earn it myself. That drives a lot of people. Right? They, this lack of, of thinking that they're, that they're qualified, that, um, that they're capable. So when temptation comes, it's like, well, I've always wanted that, but I'm not so sure I can get it myself, but now I can get it. So they reach out for that. That's where, and Satan, or Satan, as it's referred to, and is, um, that's Hebrew, and then what that really means is tempter. Doesn't mean evil, it just means tempter. So that's the way that evil works, is through temptation. So. So no one, when tempted, should say, I'm being tempted by God, for God cannot be tempted by evil, and he himself tempts no one. So James is clearly saying here, don't think that God is gonna test you through temptation.
But what? I don't, does he say anything about what happens if you give in to temptation?
Um, well, exactly right here. I mean, he says, if you don't, if you stand the test of temptation, you get the crown of life. Right? That's, that's the thing that might happen. So.
But I'm sorry.
So the.
Go to heaven?
I'm sorry, go ahead.
I, I, but if you give into the temptation, then you don't go to heaven, is that?
Well, all right, that's a great question, because, um, yeah, if you're Baptist, yes. You're Presbyterian, no, because every day is a resurrection day. Right? And, and this is written at a time when, again, the belief is that Christ is gonna return anytime. So the, this immediacy of, of people is probably a lot more than what we have right now, because we know that it's been ten thousand years and Jesus hasn't come back yet. So there's a chance that he's not gonna show up while we're still alive, right? A lot for it to happen, but pretty good chance. So we sense that, okay, we get a lot of do-overs. But at this time, this, uh, this, this re, this return of, um, Jesus was considered to be coming anytime. So you don't get a lot of, you don't get a lot of tries on this thing. So make sure you do it right the first time.
Okay.
Okay.
I mean, don't forget, if we ask God to forgive us, God will forgive us too. Love, there's that.
Yeah, just like he gives wisdom, he also gives forgiveness. But they forgive this, they forgive. But the forgiveness, the forgiveness has to really come from confession. I mean, you have to, it can't just be, you know, it's like, when I, when my kids were real little, they learned really, you know, it was really easy to say, I'm sorry, but it was a whole nother thing, did they mean it, you know? "So no one, when tempted, should say, 'I'm being tempted by God,' for God cannot be tempted by evil, and he himself tempts no one. But one who is tempted by one's desire, by one's own desire, being lured and enticed by it, then, when that desire has conceived, it gives birth to sin. And that sin, when fully grown, gives birth to death." This is really important. So... We have a desire for something, we yearn for something, um, we lust for something, right? We covet what somebody else has. So it's when we're tempted by that, right? Uh, we're being lured, enticed for it, and then, but then if we get it, right? If we, if we, if we reach out and we get it, that whatever that desire might be, it gives birth to sin. Now here's my question, how does that happen? And, and really what it is, it's the sin is separation from God. So, when you've done this, all of a sudden, you, you can start to think, wait a second, I wanted this, I got it, what do I need God for? Right? I don't need God, because I saw this and I wanted it, and I made it happen. So, and that's the sin. Because now, all of a sudden, that you've, you've equated yourself with God, God is no longer sovereign, God is no longer all, you know, the thing in control, you're, you, all of a sudden, we think that we're controlling our own outcomes. And we do to a certain extent, but not in the big way, not in the big way. So that's, that's what this caution is, that James is giving to people, is just be really careful, because once you do that, it's a road that's really hard, hard to, uh, to turn around in. So it's, don't be deceived. Alright, I think that that finishes the first chapter. No, it doesn't, I'm sorry. Let me hurt, let me get a, let me get a, on this thing a little bit here.
We got a ways to go.
Yeah, we do.
We got it.
What time is it? Eight thirty-seven? I think we're gonna stop right there for tonight. Is that alright?
That sounds good.
I'm gonna put a cool, I'm gonna put a cool quote from, um, seven, one seventeen, it was in the next paragraph.
Okay.
"Every good and perfect gift is a gift from God."
That's it, amen. Amen. So why don't we do this? If you guys have your own Bibles, right? Grab it, and then we will get together, um... Let's do this next week, right? So, uh, we'll go on next Wednesday.
Same time, same.
Same time, same channel, same bad channel, everything. So, I would like you guys, read as far as you can, right, in James. If you can get through the whole thing, that's great. And if you do, or however far you get, when you, read it critically, you know, take the time to read it, pause, think about it, what is that really saying? Put it in conversation with the verses that were just before it, so maybe that gives you a little bit better understanding. And then write it down, and, and we can come back and talk. So that way, we won't spend as much time next week actually reading through line by line, but if we find out that there's certain areas that everybody's kind of having a struggle with, or a significant number of people, we'll come back and we'll really concentrate on that, alright? I will answer anybody's questions, so don't worry about it, even if we don't get it to, and I'll, on a per, one, one P one, you know, person to person, we'll make sure we get to that. Is that alright?
Sounds good.
Right.
Alright. How did, does anybody else wanna pray out? Anybody wanna pray us out?
Come on, somebody be brave.
That's what you pay me for, right? Okay. Alright, let's pray. Lord, what a glorious and wonderful night we had, learning about, uh, who James was and, uh, what he did, and then how he was martyred, how he gave his life for you. And now we're reading this, this holy word, which is from you, and it's as instructive for us today as it was to the people that were receiving it back in nineteen, in fifty A.D. So Lord, we thank you for all of the wonderfully talented people who have put together, uh, these translations that allow us to hear your word clearly in this day and time. And then, Lord, let us know that, uh, what we're living through right now is very similar, so we can, uh, we can learn about how we can persevere ourselves and how we can become more complete. We ask for your blessings on everyone that is here. Lord, we all have the things that give us concerns, and we lift those up to you, because we trust in you. And Lord, uh, just bring us safely, bring us safely back to this place so that we can continue to study your word together. We ask this in the name of the Father, and the Son, and the Holy Spirit. Amen.
Amen.
Alright. Love you all. Good to see y'all.
Good night, y'all.
Good night.
Good night.
Bye.